I call this special session of the Ansel County Board of Education to order. At this time, we would like to recognize some of our special guests and dignitaries that are here with us this afternoon. We have Chairman of the Ansel County Commissioners, Tim Foster; Sheriff Chris Thomas; President of Coastal Carolina Community College, David Heatherly; and former Superintendent of Ansel County Schools, Dr. Kathy Spencer. We thank you all for being with us this afternoon. Our first order of business is the approval of today's agenda. I need a motion to approve. The move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I now need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11, subsection A1, A3, A6, and C, to consult with the board attorney to preserve the board's attorney-client privilege and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 through 321. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will now go into closed session.
At this time, I need a motion to resume open session.
Motion to resume.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I need a motion for the election of the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept Dr. Christopher M. Barnes as the board's nominee for the superintendent of Ansel County Schools and to approve his employment contract effective March 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The vote passes by a tally of six to one. Congratulations, Dr. Barnes. At this time, I'd like to give the board the opportunity to make any comments if they feel desired to do so.
For once, I like going first. For those of you that don't know, this was a very rigorous process. So over the last two weeks, candidates actually had to come back twice. The candidates were asked to present us... There was not only the questioning period, but they were asked to give us performance tasks using Ansel County data. And the first performance task was, how would you improve student achievement? And the second was, how would you improve community relations? The next round of interviews was a similar performance task, and it was how to increase teacher retention and, I believe again, community relations. I so look forward to this. Dr. Barnes has a very thorough 101-day plan to visit every single classroom starting March 1st.
Dr. Barnes, Superintendent Barnes, I have great faith in you for you to go forth and do the wonderful things that I've always knew you could. Please let us walk alongside you and work with you as one to be the best county we possibly can be. Thank you for your service, sir.
Dr. Barnes, you... This is the second time I've got to see you during superintendent search. The first time you were impressive. This time, you're doubly impressive. There's no doubt you have the expertise. But I want to talk about you just for a second from a personal standpoint. The overwhelming, resounding applause you got is not only an indication of what you are capable of as a professional, but of who you are as a person. And most people don't get it. Most people won't see it. But I guarantee you, about every person in this district understands it and gets it. A personal note. It's outside of my making this vote. Dr. Barnes has a reputation of taking care of people, whether it's community or individuals. And so many people have no idea how far this man goes to take care of others. I was... I was ill. And I wanted to do something for some folks. I was going to DC to get some things to bring back. I was going to DC to get some things to bring back. My sister is having some issues. I'm driving up, it's cold, it's a long trip, I'm kind of ambling along, minding my own business, and the phone rings. Dr. Barnes, not only does he want to know if I'm doing well, he wants to know if my sister is doing well. And then because I was driving that long distance, approximately five hours, he stayed on the phone to engage me in conversation, knowing that I was ill, to ensure that I made it. Of course, he had a job to do, we cut loose. But that's telling the kind of man he is. And in him, Onslow County Schools is in good hands. Thank you, Dr. Barnes.
Congratulations, Dr. Barnes. You definitely earned it, so I look forward to working with you.
Dr. Barnes, when Dr. Collins announced his retirement, it became official. I asked my congregation and multiple times throughout this to pray for Onslow County, to pray for the Board of Education, to pray for the schools, to pray that the right candidate would apply and the right candidate would be selected. I have no doubt that the Lord provided you as an answer to that prayer. I will get fussed at by somebody later on saying that. I am absolutely at peace with this decision, and I thank you for stepping up.
I just wanted to say that you would think it would be the goal of every school district to grow its own leaders, and from student to teacher to principal to district leader and now superintendent. That's exactly what has happened here. And I think that's a testimony to Onslow County Schools as well as to characteristics and qualities of Dr. Barnes as well. And I just wanted to say it'll be a privilege to begin working with you. Thank you, Dr. Barnes. And at this time, I will turn the floor over to you. Wherever you feel comfortable. You can start at one and go to the other, we don't care.
Well, this is a lot of fun. I'll talk to you all first and then turn around. And I'm very honored by the applause earlier and for the confidence that you all have had in me, Chairman Garvey, members of the board. Thank you for that vote of confidence, literally, and I look forward to our next steps working together. I promise that I will do all that I can to justify your confidence in me. You're likely aware of one of the little sayings that we have that's quite important that says, "Every student, every classroom, every day." And it reflects our collective commitment and intention to ensure that our students receive high-quality instruction in safe classrooms consistently across Onslow County Schools. And I'm very honored that I have a new opportunity to pursue those goals with you and our executive staff, our principals and teachers, our county office leaders and the others in our community. Before I got up, Jody said that I only had three minutes. So just want to give a few thank yous. Let's see if this comes out. I'll turn my back on the board now. Just literally not figuring it. Let's see. So for those of you who are here this afternoon, I don't know if you were just the curious types or what, but I appreciate your interest in this. It's important, not because of me, but because public education is important. We have a really solid pre-K-12 system here, a community college here, that kids that want to access these things, no matter their background, they have the ability to do that, and that's pretty special. I was a student at Richlands High School and had many, many teachers who poured into me, that took care of me. And, you know, through the different jobs I've had and I've worked with maybe 93% of the people in the room, I've tried to do a little bit of what they taught me. I had a principal named Mr. Ridge who really believed in taking care of his school and taking care of his people. And there are people in the audience like a semi-retired superintendent who might be here just to see if special call meetings are still special. Is that why you're here, Dr. Spencer? So, and I'm still intimidated by her, but anyway, one of the things that seems to be the same is, you know, some of the window dressing changes from time to time, but the important things about teaching and what we're able to offer kids is the same. Everyone can come to our schools, and this is an important institution. I appreciate everyone in here who supports public schools, who revere teachers, who want to invest in the things that we do, and no matter what your position or role, it's very important, and I thank you for that. I would be in trouble if I didn't say to Julie, my wife, and my family that's here, and maybe some online, "Thank you for supporting me." Anyone in the room who's an administrator knows that you are shared often between family and school, and so I thank you all for forgiving me for the times that, you know, I've not been able to be with our family because I was with others. And we'll have some more of that to come, so keep forgiving me. There is something that you all give me that, and I wish everybody had this, many in the room do, but I know that some in our world don't have this. I have the ability, and through the entirety of my career, to, on any day, win, lose, or draw, I know I'm going home to my family. Some of them even write things on my little board to remind me that, hey, you're coming home to a happy family. That's typically true. And it really helps me get through that. So thank you all for your support. Today is one of my daughter's birthdays. She probably would like for me to sing "Happy Birthday" to her, but your present will be that I will not do that. So I just want to say again, thank you to everyone in the room, those that have helped to support me along the way. And we had a meeting earlier today, really great meeting with our county commissioners, fantastic meeting, one of the best I've seen in a while. And Dr. Gartner said, I'm not sure if this is the exact quote, "But the secret is out. Onslow County is a wonderful place to work, live, and learn." And it's because of a lot of good people in this room and people like Dr. Collins. Dr. Collins, thank you, sir, for the incredible opportunities that you have given me in this prior position and for the last many years. Thank you. I'm going to take my seat, but ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please join me in a round of applause for our current and outgoing superintendent, Dr. Barry Collins.
I was going to warn you, watch out for that TV up there. At this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.